Okay, this meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We are reconvening from executive session and as always, we will start with the prayer and the pledge. Mr. Bergfeld.
Everybody could please stand. Let us pray. Father, we are so blessed that somehow we get to look over the best school district in the state, the best state in the country, and the best country in the world. Lord, help us serve this district in a way that glorifies you. Let us be grateful for the opportunities we have here in Tyler and the ability we have to have a positive influence on these children and the adults in this district as well. We ask forgiveness for mistakes in the past and wisdom for decisions in our future. May all that we do be pleasing to you. I pray this in my Savior's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the deep Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Bergfeld. We do not have any action coming out of executive session, so we are moving on to special recognitions.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. Tonight, we would like to begin our recognitions by announcing our February District Students of the Month. Our Elementary Student of the Month is Bailey Ballier, a 5th grade student at Owens Elementary. The Secondary Student of the Month is Jurnay Mosley, a 6th grade student at Bolter Middle School. And at this time, would you please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students?
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district students of the month. These students are selected based on 12 Tyler ISD learner profile attributes. These qualities lead to successful student outcomes both in and outside the classroom. We would like to recognize Bailey Ballier, a 5th grade student at Owens Elementary, as our Elementary Student of the Month. Bailey exhibits Tyler ISD's learner profile characteristic of being a good communicator. As president of Owens Elementary Student Council, Bailey leads student council meetings with confidence and speaks with authority.
We'll have a meeting next Monday to create posters and promote the fresh country.
In student council, we've done three service projects. And our latest one was writing Valentine's cards to veterans.
Teachers say she is also a strong leader. Every morning Bailey checks on other student council members to make sure they are at their stations and is able to find replacements if they are absent.
We also do early morning card duty, so we'll stand and hold open doors. We'll go open car doors, we'll greet people in the morning, and just make their day better.
And she offers this advice to those who want to follow her example.
Acting your best, making your best grades, working your hardest, and being kind to others.
Our Secondary Student of the Month is Jurnay Mosley, a sophomore at the Early College High School, who also exhibits the characteristics of a good communicator. Jurnay's instructors say she is a bright, intelligent, energetic person. As a competitor in UIL poetry, Jurnay is comfortable and confident when communicating in front of an audience.
You're not supposed to smile in public. You're not supposed to smile anywhere, girl.
I just like the emotion because I feel like it's a ripple effect. If I do something, then the crowd can feel it. I like to put my emotion into it, not only my voice, but how I feel within myself and hopefully that somebody out there who is listening will understand how I feel inside and maybe that could change how they feel about a topic or a subject.
Jurnay recently won first place at a UIL meet competing in poetry. She says she enjoys performing pieces that can uplift and empower others.
I usually talk about how society, before I was even born, had ideals on what they thought an African-American should look like, talk like, and walk like. And I want to change that.
And she hopes that with her poetry and performances, she can remind others of their worth.
I think most importantly, you should love yourself. Before you can give any words of encouragement, you have to know that for yourself. You have to love yourself. You have to encourage yourself.
In Tyler ISD, we are committed to graduating all students with the knowledge, skills, and habits necessary for success in college, careers, and life. Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and display of the Tyler ISD learner profile attributes. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD TV and sponsorship by Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System.
And board members, I would like to introduce you to Bailey Ballier, our Elementary Student of the Month. Bailey, would you please come forward? And we'd also like to ask your parents to stand at this time. We would also like to congratulate our Secondary Student of the Month, Jurnay Mosley, who is not a 6th grade student at Bolter. She is a sophomore at Early College High School. So, that is my fault. Jurnay, will you please come forward? And will your mom please stand up so we can congratulate you as well? We would also like to congratulate Janessa Ward, a junior at John Tyler High School, and Tyler Stevens, a senior at Robert E. Lee High School, for receiving All-State Band Honors and performing at the Texas Music Educators Association Convention in San Antonio. Will both of y'all please come forward, Janessa and Tyler? And if your family's here, please ask them to stand as well. Tonight, we also celebrate our District Teacher of the Month, Andy Haas, from Early College High School. Andy has been a member of the ECHS team for three years now, and Mr. Haas has an excellent rapport with faculty, staff, and parents. He serves as the POW co-sponsor and is a TSI proctor and is co-testing coordinator for the campus. Mr. Haas truly represents the characteristics of an outstanding teacher. So, Mr. Haas, will you please come forward? And that completes our recognitions for this evening.
Okay, it's always fun celebrating our students and recognizing them and our staff for doing good work. Gina, do we have anybody signed up for... Okay, well, we will once again have to skip public participation. Sorry about that, folks. Moving on down the agenda, we have the approval of minutes for Board Workshop, January 16th, the regular meeting, the 23rd, and the special meeting, January 30th. Do I have any motions to approve those minutes?
I move to approve those minutes.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The minutes are approved. Okay, now we have continuous improvement in student outcomes. We have measures, our MAP updates, our middle-of-the-year results up on the agenda next.
Mr. Washman is... Dr. Kristi Hansen, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, and James Kurton, Director of Assessment and Accountability, make their way to the podium. We're pleased to present the middle-of-the-year MAP data from NWEA. This is year five for us in providing this as an assessment, nationally-normed data in regard to being compared to not just the kids in Texas, but to the STAR, but also nationwide as well. So, I'm going to turn it over to these two individuals for the report.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford and board. I had a little moment there where I was...
Forgot who we were?
Forgot who I worked for. So, we'll just start, we'll just jump right in and start talking about the reading scores. This is cohort data. So, when you look at first grade, what you're looking at are kindergarten kids who are in first grade now, so that you can kind of see. And we did that by master, we tried to use the same language as STAR to help sort of try to compare apples to apples there. So, you can see that the first grade... Am I explaining that correctly? Okay. So, the first grade kids, the first grade students who were at approaches, they were, you know, we always kind of look at negative three, plus or minus three is about the same. So, we had a little bump in third grade, which we are glad about, right? Because that's, we really are looking to start seeing some of those larger bumps, which you would expect by year three, we would start seeing some of those larger bumps. So, the third, fourth, and fifth grade, we were happy to see those results. And we're also really wanting to see that Meets and Masters column go up as well. And then this is the pure performance. So, again, you can see, starting in third grade, third and fourth grade, we got some little jumps there in reading. And then pretty flat the rest. We were glad to see that first grade Meets column go up by eight. That was good because we really want to be looking at that Meet to Masters. We know that if kids are getting to Meets and Masters, we can feel really confident that they're going to do well. Also, wanted you to see the STAR performance as compared to last year, so that you can kind of see, this is where we were last year, and this is where the students performed on STAR. So, third grade, for example, we were at 64 last year at passing, and we scored 67 on STAR. If that kind of helped you see that.
So, the parentheses?
The parentheses is plus or minus from last year.
From last year's cohort, that cohort, right?
This is, this particular one, sir, is not cohort.
Okay.
This one is cohort.
Right.
This one is pure performance for that particular group.
So, it's last year's third graders compared to this year's third graders?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then you can see the, sort of see where we landed with STAR. MAP is a pretty good projection of how we're going to do on STAR if nothing were to change. So, we take those MAP scores, we look at the learning progression that they provide for us, then we begin some really intense intervention as well. So, as you can tell, we usually, fifth grade, for example, or, you know, you can see that we usually can get some bumps out of there. So, this is the math, similar, this is cohort data. So, again, we had some bumps in third grade, which shows us where our progression is with new curriculum and new things, because those kiddos have been doing this now for a few Really love seeing that fifth grade score. And then this was the MAP, the just the pure performance. So, third graders compared to third graders last year, fourth graders compared to fourth grade last year, and where they fell on STAR last year as well, so that you can kind of tell what our projections are if everything stays the same. I just did want to point out that we had a lot of campuses stayed the same, and we had several of them that really made some significant bumps there. Really proud of Jones and Hogg there. They're making some big strides, doing a lot of intervention. They started their interventions really early. So, questions?
While they're thinking about it, what's the booger bear in 6th grade? What is it? I mean, I know everybody likes to say curriculums change and the tests change, but really, what is that?
So, 6th grade really is one of the most difficult tests of all the STAR tests of all of them, 3rd grade through EOC, with the exception of maybe the US History one. It is the year that 50% of the test is brand-new curriculum. It's the only year. All the rest of it, all the rest of the assessments are built on the previous standards, and 6th grade has about 50% of it as well. But it is the one year, it's also the big year, that if kids don't get that 6th grade curriculum really solidly, then they tend to not do as well on the SAT, ACT. There are some things that are taught in 6th grade that never come back up again. So, the curriculum, the curriculum itself in 6th grade is a difficult curriculum, and the test is very difficult in 6th grade. It is one of the most difficult tests that they'll have in their entire school career.
So, I wonder if that's our next big project, is that if we're getting some traction on the things we've done for the last five years to where we're starting to get some positive outcomes, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, if we don't start introducing some of that stuff earlier than just 6th grade? Is that probably a strategy we could follow?
Right. Well, for the, we're going to have to look at probably some reading intervention for the kids that really haven't had those foundational skills that were taught differently, that are missing them. So, when they, for the reading, they're getting to a point where they really need to be decoding, because they're being introduced to a lot of academic vocabulary. If they didn't have phonics and phonemic awareness, they're not going to have the skills to be able to do that.
So, you're tying that, even in math, you're tying that back to...
The academic vocab, yeah, they can't, they cannot decode their... So, we're going to have to go back and do some morphology and some foundational skills with our middle school kids.
So, the 2008, or the 2028 cohort's in 4th grade right now. So, that would be the 26ers. So, when should we, when should the board, when should the public start seeing some of these things kind of level out to where that's not as much of an issue? Are we looking at this year's, what, second graders or first graders or what?
Right. I think this year's second graders for sure have a more solid foundation. I would think the entire new, big emphasis on phonics and phonemic awareness really happened this year.
But even the 3rd grade.
Solid, the 3rd grade, we're getting, we're getting some bumps.
Your 2030s, the 2030 cohort, the 30s are the ones that the strategy should be in 6th grade. We don't have this. We're going, oh, my gosh, look at 6th grade.
Right. We shouldn't be doing triage as much, I would think. We'll need to focus on some middle school intervention, though, for sure.
Yeah, but the difficulty of that 6th grade new content, if we introduce some of that earlier?
Yes.
Because they can academically handle it?
Yes, for the kids that can...
Could be a strategy, okay.
Dr. Hansen, can you comment on how the implementation of the new reading program's going?
I can. I would say that it, you know, we've had some bumps in the road, but most of that is related to materials, just getting material from the publisher, then getting it out. So, that has been a frustration for the teachers. I'm just, in the spirit of transparency, that has been a frustration. There, like any curriculum, as we get into it, we realize some strengths and weaknesses. And so, we've realized some areas where it's really strong and some areas where it's a little thinner than we would prefer, so we know we're going to have to enhance that next year. An example is phonemic awareness in 3rd grade. It's kind of nonexistent. So, there's the assumption that the kids have had that strong background, and if they haven't, then there's, that amount of time probably has not been built in. So, we took the curriculum exactly as it stood this year and decided that we were going to look at the pros and cons, and we know where we're going to have to firm it up. There's some conversation about the assessments that come with it and maybe looking at making those a little more rigorous and making sure that those are more aligned with what the kids might see in STAR. So, we're, there are some things we need to improve. Overall, though, we're happy with the product and, you know, and what we got.
Percent-wise, how many of our elementary, the ones that were supposed to be trained? How many of those, where are we at?
Let's see, we had our final one. So, I would say we're sitting probably at 80-some percent. I can get you that exact number by tomorrow.
That's fine. The reason I bring that up is to let the board know that we had a pretty spirited conversation with our elementary principals at the last principal meeting about why we weren't creative enough in figuring out a way to get our people to training on Saturdays. I realize nobody wants to give up their Saturdays, but there are ways to creatively handle that. And so, if we're in the mid-80s on that, I'm a little bit more comfortable.
It's better than it was a month ago, right?
Better than it was a month ago, as far as getting everybody trained. So, I think the two principals that are in here, elementary that are in here right now, I don't think they were some of the problems.
Is that training for the reading program, or is that letters? Or what training are you referring to?
That's the Children's Learning Institute.
CLI stuff, yes.
So, the letters, we had a cohort of about 150 people that went through it. Every other teacher, K through 3, they were required to go through three trainings with the Children's Learning Institute. One was PA phonemic awareness, and one was phonics, and the other one was effective reading instruction in the classroom.
Now, the early training was the, what we called Silt Plus, to where your Silt members went through that. So, we did get a core group of teachers on each campus, along with the campus administration and master teachers, trained on the, all the letter stuff. That was in the summer.
Still, we're still doing it now.
And the campuses that are performing at the high, as far as implementation goes, those folks are doing trainings on their campuses. So...
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you for your presentation. And I guess we have certifications update for the CTE.
Gary Brown, Executive Director of College and Career, is now taking the table to give us an update on CTE certifications. I think you'll like what he's going to present.
Board President Washman, Dr. Crawford, and board members, I appreciate the opportunity to share some information, middle-of-the-year, where we are on certifications in career technology education. Just kind of as an overview, I brought a copy of our updated programs of study guide. We do offer 26 programs of studies in CTE that represent all 16 of the nationally-recognized clusters. And so, students are going through the process right now of selecting courses for next year. So, really excited to see what those results come back with. But specifically, as it relates to certifications and the college career, military readiness indicators, just kind of a review, the college readiness, obviously, we're talking about the AP exams and college readiness exams and dual credit. This specifically, in the career ready area, is talking about certifications, and that's been our focus now for several years. I think some of the numbers bear that out, and I always want to mention the military readiness component, that students enlist in armed forces as well. But this presentation specifically is going to address the certifications and where we are at this point in the school year. The goal, I won't go back through and read that, but in 2016, when the goal was established, the baseline information had us at 26th in the district. And at that time, it was not a focus within CCMR. So, I think we've come to realize over the last few years that this number is not necessarily a relevant one that we look at. I just wanted to point out that this is the actual goal. We are looking at modifying the goal, moving forward in a different direction as far as the numbers and the percentages of graduates. But you can see that the 44 target last year, and just for an example of how out of whack that is already, we were at 393. And so, 53 is this year's goal. We don't look at that number. We're looking at the green number and want to exceed that this year, certainly. So, if you just look at the fall semester for certifications, we cut this off in mid-January for me to get information ready for this report. We had 428 students in the fall semester earn certifications, and of those, 428, 178 were the industry-based certifications that are on the state certification list. And just to give you a comparison of where we are this year compared to last year, we were at 33 in this column last year. And there are a couple of reasons why. The state list, if you remember, has grown significantly. So, we've got some new certifications that are really relevant, and the students are performing well on, in some of our programs of study. But some other numbers, 148 certifications that are specifically Carl Perkins-recognized, and then 562 industry-recognized certifications. And this includes all the ones that are local industry has said are relevant. So, this could include anything from first aid to CPR and others. And you see the photographs, I always like to put some pictures of students. The students on the left, they've passed their written cosmetology license exam, and so they'll have the practical part, basically 100%. If they pass the written part, they're going to pass the practical. And these are Adobe Premiere students from Advanced Audiovisual Technology on the right that have earned some certifications so far this year. Looking ahead to better align with the local needs and with accountability system, we're looking at more at the graduating class and not just the hard numbers of certifications earned, but the actual percentages of students that attain these certifications. Like, that is going to be a better measurement and number moving forward. The students on the left, and I highlighted these two groups, this is a new certification. They were the very first two in the district that earned the OSHA 30, Occupational Safety and Health Administration certification, so we're proud of them. And that number's up over 20 now, so far. And the students on the right is a new certification that's non-commissioned security guard level 2. Brand-new on the list, this is criminal justice. We've got 39 students, I believe, that have been able to earn and attain that certification. And then the last thing I would just mention, we appreciate the Public Relations Communications Department. This is CTE month, so we're celebrating and help us kind of get the word out of the good news that's happening. This shows the 1,300 certifications from last year, and then, of course, literally over 4,000 middle school and high school students that are enrolled in CTE programs. And that's the information that I have to share. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Brown, just real briefly, talk to them about, as far as accountability goes and the scoring, the change in the half a point for the coherent sequence of courses, and maybe even what the future of that is.
Okay. Previously, in the CCMR component, students that would stay in their coherent sequence of CTE courses, staying, if they started in engineering, they would stay in that engineering pathway. Even if they didn't attain any other CCMR measure, including a certification, the district could receive a half a point credit in the CCMR category. This year's seniors graduating will be the first group that no longer exists. So, when the new report comes out for this graduation cohort, which will be the following fall...
Lagging data.
Lagging data. But the half point is no longer part of this equation. We've been talking about that now for a while.
So, remember on February 17th of 2020, that we informed the public that the rules have changed.
Rules have changed.
The game's changed. It's no longer 10 yards to get a first down, it's 15. Yeah. But there is hope, because they may bring it back. So, we will have a lag year to where they don't, they won't count. So we will have a lag year to where they don't, they won't count. So the, the twenty-twenty's won't count, but possibly after the next legislative session, which is twenty-one, possibly the twenty-two's will count. So you may have two years of, of this half point being gone, only to reappear again. So it may be ten yards to get a first down again.
Moving target.
Yeah, so, but, but I think we've got enough capacity built in to where we're getting these certifications. It really helped with the state list.
Yes.
Being expanded. And I guess those le, the level-two non-commissioned security, are those on the state list?
They are.
See, that's a, that's a good one.
That's a new one. Those are both, OSHA-30 and this one are new.
Yeah, so there's a little bit of gamesmanship on the accountability. We'll try to, we'll try to stay ahead of that. Gary's really, really, excuse me, Mr. Brown is really good at that, so we'll continue to do that.
Any other questions or comments? I have one. Um, so, very, very seldom if I see somebody post something on social media about another district and what they do. Very seldom do we not do it already, and it's always fun to go, yeah, we, we do that. And so one thing I'm wondering about, when I was, uh, uh, my first job ever, first summer job, I surveyed. And I didn't know if we have any, any surveying type of thing going on, uh, at the CTC. And, I mean, I'm, either way, it's fine.
Well, there is a component within construction science where surveying is a topic or module that we cover. It's not specifically in the certification list, but it is part of our curriculum.
Okay.
For students that stays in the construction science pathway, th, they will touch on survey.
Okay, all right, just curious. Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay, now moving on to the consent agenda, I do believe we're going to, uh, pull a couple of items to talk about. Uh, B, gifts and donations, and then I think we're also going to pull F. So I'll entertain a motion to approve items A through H with the exception of B and F, so we can talk about them.
So moved?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so gifts and donations, what do we have?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Washman, six thousand, or excuse me, sixty thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars is what's being provided tonight to Caldwell Arts Magnet, um, via the Tyler ISD Foundation. There's a big check that they wanna take a picture with y'all, um, I guess. Mr. Markle, come on up and take a picture with your jacket. Yes, that needs to be documented.
You gotta throw off the color on this picture.
You know, um, we certainly appreciate the foundation and them being able to do this, and, and maybe Mr. Markle can come up here with Mr. Jones and describe what that number's gonna be used towards.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm so excited to be back here again this month with another big check. Uh, but this sixty thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars is an award, a grant award, that was given to the foundation by the Women's Fund of Smith County for the creation of an authentic ceramics lab at Caldwell Arts Academy. And so this new enhanced facility should allow, uh, the visual arts offered at Caldwell to be a little elevated. It should provide some new opportunities for district students, and it should help foster some community pride within our city, just having such an outstanding facility in the downtown arts district. So we hope you guys will consider approving this gift. And maybe take a picture with you, if you choose to accept the gift.
If we choose to accept, yes, we'll grant you a picture. May I have a motion to accept this donation?
I move that we gratefully accept this gift.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The gift is accepted. All right, Bobby, you wanna say something?
She, she's been doing a wonderful job expressing, uh, our thankfulness for this opportunity, um, in presenting to the Women's Fund. Um, I, I said this at the banquet, but it was very intimidating. Um, it's, it's a lot of very, very strong women who have a lot of desire to make the community great. And so when you go to there, you know, they wanna hear what you're gonna do differently. And, and thanks to, uh, you know, the, the foundation of, you know, they really prepared us for that experience, and I think it's gonna be a great partnership. Um, and it was a really great event that we got to go to, um, with a lot of great opportunities that are gonna come from the district. And we even connected there with some groups that also got awarded that we could start partnering with. Um, and so that was exciting, and it's just a new venture for us in the networking of our community. So we're just super honored to, uh, to, to get this money, and thank you for accepting it for, on behalf of the foundation.
Well, good deal.
Alicia Buckner, I see you walking out the door. You're part of the foundation.
Well, one thing I can say is Principal Markle is always championing what's going on at Caldwell, wherever we are, and always bragging on what's going on there, and he'll even brag on us board members from time to time in all we do. So, thanks for that, Bobby. Okay, let's take this picture.
I have that jacket and that hair.
Okay. Oh, yeah, so moving on to item F, uh, the competitive sealed proposal delivery method in 2020. We're just curious to hear about this.
Yeah, I asked for this to get pulled. Mr. Loper, if you'll just come up here, just, you described this so expertly compared to the superintendent of schools, that I wanted to make sure that you kinda briefed the board on, on what this transcribes.
Absolutely. Um, if I can briefly describe, the, the state, the Education Court Education Code, I'm sorry, requires the board to accept a delivery method if it's other than competitive sealed bidding, okay? So, to kinda give you some pros and cons, when you do competitive sealed bids, it's based mainly on price, first of all. It's based mainly on a specification, and it's typically used when you have to buy like a piece of equipment quickly to restore operations, if that makes sense to you. With projects that we have coming up here that I'm aware of, one of them being, uh, Caldwell Auditorium, that we're looking at doing some improvements there at this time, and a lot of specialized construction, some of our paving and roofing. When you use a competitive sealed proposal method, it gives us a whole lot more flexibility. Now, price isn't the main criteria of it, though. I promise you, I'm always looking at that. Um, but it gives you flexibility that where you can look at several different suppliers, whoever bid on the specifications, and they have to meet specifications, but there may be a better product. And some of the things may be, is, you can look at with your suppliers is longevity, how long they've been in business, financials, uh, historically, how their products performed, and, um, of course, warranties and all kinds of other scope that just really give us a flexibility to bring the best, best value to the school district. It takes a little longer, but if approved tonight, we're way ahead of the ball here, and, and we'll prepare it that way.
So we're not approving any projects, just the, just the actual methodology?
Just, just the delivery method.
Delivery method, mm-hmm, okay. So, anything else besides what you mentioned potentially could fall underneath this as well this summer?
Um, any, any projects that we bid could fall under this.
Okay.
Um, there could be, let me give you an example, if we were to relight a football field, or a softball field, or a baseball field, or something like that. If we were to, like I mentioned, our paving, I've got, uh, quite a bit of paving projects coming up that we're in the design phase right now. Um, and, uh, it's gonna be quite large projects, so that's just to give an example of a few.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on that? Comments? Okay, I think we're pretty clear. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve item F.
Move to approve the sealed proposal delivery method.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. And now we are moving on to, uh, the curriculum instruction consent agenda and consider approval of, uh, the memorandum of understanding with Tyler Junior College for Early College High School.
Yes, sir, Board, uh, and Madam Board trustee as well. Um, we have before you the annual renewal of our Early College High School Agreement with Tyler Junior College. Uh, last year, we graduated approximately eighty-four students with their associate's degree, along with their high school diploma. This year's senior class is, is a bit smaller than last year. We're looking at about seventy. So that's gonna be another great year that we have for Early College High School, but this is the annual memorandum of understanding with Tyler Junior College, and what a fine institution it is over there.
Okay, any comments or questions there, or do I have a, a motion to approve that item?
I move that we approve the memorandum of, of understanding between KJC and Tyler ISD for Early College High School.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, and motion carries. Uh, now we have superintendent staff reports, first being the District of Innovation Teacher Certifications Granted.
And for further information, contact Ronald Jones, Chief of Staff, or Laura Cano, Executive Director of Human Resources. But on page one oh eight of your packet, we have our annual reporting of the District of Innovation certifications that we have offered. Let me tell you how much we're appreciative of y'all having the flexibility to provide this to the administration. Uh, first of all, our District of Innovation Committee, who allowed us to go this route, uh, providing these local certifications for those that might, uh, miss, you know, a small chunk of, of, of full teacher certification, but at least they have a college degree. Um, a hundred and eight, one hun, excuse me, a hundred, one hundred and eight of those, uh, to, uh, to employ, um, degreed staff in place of the possibility of having a, uh, an inconsistent substitute or, or vacancy in that class. So, one hundred and eight certifications listed in front of you. Certainly, we would love to hire every person that we have as a fully certified credential teacher. Um, but, you know, the amount of vacancies statewide, this is the, the way that the game's heading. And until our, until we recognize that, that, uh, we need to pay our teachers better, um, the, the funding mechanisms need to be, to be in place from the state, um, until we start championing what we're doing, um, we're, this is what we're, this is the pool that we're going to, to pick from, and we're very thankful that these folks in our community that have a college degree do wanna come teach for Tyler ISD. Um, one last thing, and I'll ask Ron, Mr. Jones, and maybe even Ms. Cano. Didn't y'all, a couple of weeks ago, you mentioned to me that a lot of our DOI people stick around. They're not the ones that, that bail. They're pretty resilient, aren't they?
Yes, indeed, they are.
Yeah. And I don't know the count. I know it's increased since we approved, or since we proposed this and the board approved it, but there's not too many districts in the state that are, that are full DOI on the certification end of it. A lot of folks are still just constrained by the, what they determine as high needs or as career technology education. Some of those hard to find out there as well. But somebody's got a degree in English that might have wanted to, want it, went into journalism. Um, said they, they tried that, and maybe they wanna come teach now, so we're worried. I don't, I don't know if that's something you wanna do. But I, but I, I think that's something that's valuable for us in Tyler ISD that does separate us out from, from other districts in East Texas. I don't know how many in East Texas have done this yet, to be honest with you, so very appreciative of that, as far as that goes.
Okay, well, it appears that in the, the, the climate of education in the state of Texas, it sure does, uh, improve your odds of being successful to, uh, have these District of Innovation certifications. I'm glad we're doing it.
Yeah, because I think, you know, one, one too long ago, we were sitting up here and asking how many vacancies, vacancies we had district-wide, and then y'all would look at us and go, how are you gonna fix that? And so, th, there's not too many tools in the, in the, in the box to be able to do that. So this is something that, that's, that's, uh, beneficial for us, but I do think that you're gonna start seeing more and more in this if I, as our, as our teachers, um, the retirement-eligible teachers increase, um, they'll start taking advantage of that. And, um, and we need to be flexible enough to where we have some different strategies to be able to hire folks. Certainly want great teachers that are certified, that went through teacher education programs, which is a whole other topic. Um, but, but we certainly ha, like this flexibility to be able to do this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? We appreciate the report, and, uh, this is an exciting one to hear about. K through eight dual-language Spanish immersion at Birdwell.
Yeah, coming up to the table right now, we have Principal at Birdwell Elementary School Bethany Moody, along with Executive Director of School Improvement, who has Birdwell as one of her schools, Dr. Julie Davis. You know, a few years ago, we introduced the Pathfinder Initiative here at Tyler ISD for, for choice, um, innovation schools, and also celebrating and enhancing our comprehensive schools. And today, we have a presentation to the board about K through eight, another K through eight proposal, um, for dual-language Spanish immersion at Birdwell. As you're familiar, before they start, we already have one K eight campus. It'll add its eighth-grade class next year at Caldwell Fine Arts Magnet. Uh, we also are proposing that our Spanish immersion, uh, go that route as well, and we, we think we have the numbers to be able to pull that off as well, and to provide that continuum of biliteracy, uh, in Spanish and in English grades kindergarten, all the way through twelfth grade. Ms. Moody, Dr. Davis.
Good evening. Board President Washman, and Dr. Crawford, and board members, thank you for this opportunity to come this evening and to speak with you in regards to the K through eight dual-language Spanish immersion at Birdwell. Ms. Moody's gonna share just a little bit of information and overview of what the programming looks like, the benefits of that program, as well as some survey that was collected at Birdwell.
All right, good evening, Board. It's with a great honor that I speak about this. We're very passionate about this at Birdwell. And, um, I wanna just direct you to the presentation that you've been presented. Um, there's rigorous literacy and academic content every day at Birdwell. And what is most exciting about this is that we have high levels of language proficiency and literacy happening in both languages. And another feature that we see in our students is that they attain high levels of academic achievement. And so those are two components that have been consistent throughout the program. And so as we look to expand, um, we seek to continue that. We wanna talk about just an overview of some academic and social benefits. So there's high proficiency demonstrated in the immersion language. And to see that outcome by the end of fifth grade is rewarding. We see it sometimes as early as second and third grade where students are working in proficiency. Also, if you direct you down to the bottom, it speaks there that there's equal or better performance than, uh, non-dual-language students on math and reading standardized tests administered in English. Again, that's from the Collier-Collers, uh, study, and that's consistent with what we're seeing in, in our students as well as they move on to middle school. Some long-term benefits, uh, the opportunity to receive college credit through the AP placement exam. You heard reference to that earlier in the presentation. Uh, along with that, there's an opportunity to earn advanced college credit, um, as well. And so the thing that, uh, might be new to us here in the district, but certainly attainable, is something the state offers called the Seal of Biliteracy. So upon high school graduation, there is an opportunity for students that walk through this pathway to, uh, graduate with that seal. What that is, is basically awarded, awarded by the school district in recognition of those students that have attained high-level mastery in both languages. Uh, in this case, it would be English and Spanish. It also speaks to universities and employees that are seeking that there's that high level that's proficient and beyond just proficiency that's needed in the workforce. So to talk about how dual-language is currently done in our K through fifth content and language structures, our students learn to read in Spanish first. If you're in the Spanish Language Immersion Program, then that is your first experience. Uh, Spanish instruction includes reading, language arts, social studies, and science. And part of that is the social studies and science is a secondary means of reading in the content. English instruction includes math and early literacy, so a lot of the word study that you heard, spoke, referenced to earlier this evening. Second through fifth... Second through fifth, Spanish instruction, uh, includes science and social studies, but you'll see there that it goes to a fifty-fifty instruction model when it comes to, um, English language arts. So reading language arts is delivered, reading and language arts is delivered fifty percent in English, fifty percent in Spanish, and then math continues, uh, in the English instruction as well. When we look at the sixth and eighth grade content, what we want to do is provide an environment where that biliteracy can flourish and continue. So we'll do that through introducing Spanish instruction in one of the core subjects such as social studies, going along with that would be the continued, um, fifty-fifty model in Spanish language arts, and English instruction would be reading language arts for the other fifty percent of that, uh, component, and then math and science. Additional electives that can be offered, um, language enrichment, if there are students that might need some skill learning in the opposite language, we call that the partner language, so you have their first language and then their partner language. We also have the opportunities for Spanish two and Spanish three. Um, just quickly, there is something presented by TEA that for students that have been enrolled in a two-way or one-way, we are a two-way program, for five continuous years, are able to, uh, earn credit for high school after completion of those five years, given, uh, some conditions, and that is that they meet, meet their masters on the STAR exams and that they can, are continuous within those five, uh, years as well as passing tell pass with advanced time.
Now, Ms. Moody, that's a choice by the local district to whether or not we want to do that, right? Correct?
Yes.
It's not an automatic?
It's, it can be granted from the state.
It can be granted?
Yes.
But it'd be a local decision on whether or not we want to do that, because if we want, if they want to opt out before, it kind of defeats the purpose of going K through twelve?
Right.
Is what we're thinking?
Yeah, and that, it all builds into the pathway, but yes.
Okay.
All right, so when we look at the survey results, what we did is we sent out a survey, it was not mandatory, but it was, uh, voluntary for all of our community, our dual language families, and what we saw was very favorable results. So when you look at overall, um, our yes percentage, it says seventy-one point six, maybe it's, uh, twenty-two point two combined, that's generally about ninety-four percent. Um, when we talked to our current fifth grade cohort, uh, we were about sixty-eight percent and twenty-four percent of the maybe, and that's a total of ninety-two percent. Um, we really only had three students, uh, families not respond, and, uh, it's overall very favorable, uh, feedback that we're receiving, and so we're excited about moving forward.
Sure.
So what that looks like for the twenty-twenty-one school year, K through three monolingual be, uh, transferred to new zones, the fourth and fifth grade monolingual will be grandfathered just as it was, uh, when we went to the previous K eight model. We will add a sixth grade dual language immersion. The following year, twenty-one, twenty-two, the fifth grade monolingual will be grandfathered, we'll add that seventh grade, and then in the year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, we'll add the eighth grade final dual language immersion, and we fully function at that point.
Yeah, so new zones, what we're thinking, and it does match up, John Landis, the, the zone master, um, the, the, the district's demographer, uh, actually ran that, and it looks like it's split evenly north of, um, uh, Sunny Brook, okay, and south of Sunny Brook, um, that, south of it could be zoned to Pete, um, and then north of it could be actually be zoned to Bell, and, and that is something that we're still working on right now, but it looks like that's how it's going to shake out because there's a, there's an equal amount there. They've also got a high number of transfers in that make up your monolingual classes, is that correct, Ms. Moody?
Yes, sir.
What, do you know the approximate numbers of that?
Uh, the approximate numbers were in the forties.
In the forties? For the percentage or?
No, for the, the number.
For the number?
That we have in the K through two.
The K through two number, yeah, it's forty, so it's not a high percentage of kiddos that are not in dual language, so it looks like we're going to be able to, to alleviate that, uh, with the grandfathering in and not just, it's similar to what we did at Caldwell, I believe, as well, as far as the zones go.
Yes. So that would be the, the close of our presentation and certainly if there's any questions.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's a very exciting and interesting deal. Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'll start.
Okay.
Um, obviously, I've had my Sam there since he, uh, was in kindergarten in the dual language program. Uh, it's been phenomenal in our family. Um, as a house full of English-only speakers, it's been challenging to, uh, maintain during the summers, and it's been challenging to, um, to encourage him, and now that his homework's actually getting hard, we're wearing out Google Translate trying to help him. Um, as you think about middle school, though, um, the extracurriculars, the beginnings of athletics, the beginnings of, of band and those types of things, um, also I have a daughter at Caldwell, and those are some of the things that you kind of tend to sacrifice here in Tyler when you go to a magnet program. What are your initial thoughts about extracurricular activities that may or may not be offered for middle school students at a K eight Birdwell?
Well, I know that when the athletics came up, that I was ver- I was able to have verification that the students will have the opportunity to play at their home camps, so where they're zoned to, but I say home camp, they're zoned campus, so if they're zoned to a middle school, they will have the opportunity to play sports and athletics at that campus. When it relates to, uh, the fine arts, um, you know, we will run arts through, all the way through. Uh, as it relates to music, uh, I was brainstorming some with our music teacher, there might be some things that we can provide as well as, uh, after-school clubs and things like that that would still provide an enriched experience for students.
And then you mentioned it would stay a two-way program, um, which for our child who had done kindergarten in the district in English and then to go do it in Spanish, that worked just fine. Did you consider, um, implementing a two-way program in addition to the one-way? Is that, is that an option for the district to consider?
So we are, at this point, fully functional in the two-way program, and so that two-way will continue into the middle school program, and so we'll continue with those immersion students that started in Kinder and, um, have the, what we call English learners, um, also join with those students as well. So the two-way would be present fully Kinder through eight. Does that answer the question that you're asking?
I think so.
Well, the one-way, I, I think the reason we decided to stick with two-way was we felt, we were not just comfortable, but we actually had a little bit of expertise at this, and starting up a new program with, with just the one-way would have been probably harder to pull off than, than getting this going. I think that one-way could be in the future, and I think this, this was the most palatable thing to do as we're trying to expand this into K eight, and then later into nine, twelve. Not Birdwell. Not, not, not Birdwell High School.
Well, speaking of high school, you know, so if, if a kid goes K through eight, Spanish immersion, by the time they are in high school, I mean, I would imagine that they're well ahead of the Spanish curve for an average high schooler, and so are there, I guess there'll be advanced options for those kids in high school? Everybody's nodding their head.
Yes, both, both high schools have perked up as far as their interest goes to adding a, another innovative program. It doesn't, we don't have one in East Texas like that. We think it, we think it gives us an advantage, uh, because of our scale here in East Texas that, that Tyler can pull this off for, um, not just, you know, the Spanish speakers that are out there that are wanting to acquire the English language, but vice versa. And I've, I've even said that, if we'd had an established, um, immersion program here when we moved here six years ago, AJ, we would have had a tough decision, because that's something I think that is, um, you know, that, that, that generation of kids, uh, having a, a bilingual background's going to give them some opportunities and some advantages as our, whether we like it or not, we're changing a little bit, and, um, so I think it's something, you know, we dipped our toe in the water on Mandarin, we just dipped our toe in the water on that, so we think that we can capitalize on this, uh, at an existing school. We actually looked at another location, we looked at, at Caldwell to see if six-eight would be an appropriate place over there, but we really landed back on Birdwell because of what Ms. Moody has been able to do, along with what Ms., Ms. Donna Bundy did, uh, a while back as well, and established this, uh, very successful dual language school that we have at Birdwell.
It'll also provide at the high school level an opportunity to offer some more AP-type classes that involve them earning those credits toward college for Spanish courses.
Yeah, the instruction at the high school becomes pretty, pretty rigorous, because you start, wind up doing the four core, obviously, uh, continuing on with in the, in the Spanish language there, and if you're talking about a, a student by the time they graduate Tyler ISD having thirteen years, maybe even thirteen years plus of instruction in both English and in Spanish, that's a pretty cool thing to have, um, that goes along with some of our other portfolio inside of our Pathfinder initiative.
And then looking even further down the road, you know, we were talking about certifications earlier, I know that, you know, the style of Spanish we'll be teaching will be the same style of Spanish that you get certified in to teach, if I'm not mistaken, which is different from what a lot of kids might grow up speaking, and so those kids are already well ahead of that curve to get.
Sure.
If they want to pursue that, you know, so we could be training a, a new generation of Spanish teachers in Tyler ISD.
Yeah, our HR, our HR department has the best program. Remember that acronym on that, Rojo?
Beginning for.
Beginning what?
Beginning for student to teacher.
What's the E stand for?
Beginning educator.
Okay. Beginning educators for students to teachers. So yes, we've got that in, in place, in fact, well, I, I did tell the board, I think at the last workshop, that, that, uh, it might have been the last meeting, I'm not sure, but that we've actually got some early graduates that are, that we may consider for, for, uh, some of that student loan forgiveness, you know, we, two that actually came up through the program, but actually we're going to finish after we, uh, executed that agreement, so, um, we've got kids identified, that just, we just got to get them through the program. We've got to get them through the, the K twelve experience, then get them through the, uh, the college experience, and then get them signed on, uh, to work in Tyler ISD. Very similar to what we're doing with our, uh, master's degree folks to where they, they've got to work for us if they're going to go into agreement with us contractually for us to, to pay for some of their college on the back end. So, is that right, Ms. Cano?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We take them at the end.
Yeah.
For the BFST years, right? BEST, besters. Yeah, okay.
Ms. Moody, the, in the presentation, it mentioned Spanish two and Spanish three. Is that high school Spanish two and Spanish three in seventh and eighth grade essentially? Is, is that what that is?
Yes, the Spanish two could be offered, those students that receive credit, should the district, uh, allow that, uh, would receive Spanish one, so they could go immediately after fifth grade, uh, into, they'd be qualified with the prerequisite of Spanish one to take Spanish two. Uh, there would be some enrichment that would need to happen in order to prepare students for the level of Spanish three, but definitely doable, and so what you're looking at is while they, when they go into high school, they are looking at already earning one of two credits that are needed for the low requirement, and that's the languages other than English. So it's a very exciting opportunity, uh, that biliteracy would reward, and that also puts them on track to receive the biliteracy seal from the state, which actually would go on their transcript, uh, and also on their diploma, which would encourage them to stay on that path. It's a unique opportunity.
Previously, to enter the program, if you were a non-Spanish speaker, the only place you could enter was in kindergarten, is that still going to be the case?
So that's the preferred entrance, just for the experience of true Spanish immersion, starting at the youngest age possible. There is an opening for, students can come in at that beginning of first grades, that first semester, uh, really ideally the first week of school, because you're still going to go back and make up ground, but yes, there is an allowance for that.
Yeah, I could see a, you know, there's a local Spanish immersion private offering here, I think.
Preschool?
In preschool, to where if they did it right there, that they may have enough Spanish knowledge to actually get in that first grade year, so there is a mechanism for that, but I, it would, I don't know much about it, but I, I'm sure it'd be pretty difficult to try to come in after that.
We've had students do it successfully, we've had students try it, it's been a challenge. The most successful is the immersion beginning at Kinder, but it's certainly possible, given their fluency in English. If that age.
So I'm, uh, really excited about this, this is going to be awesome, we've needed this for a while, and you guys are the perfect place to, to have this. Just real quick question about numbers, do you have any idea what sixth grade might look like next year?
So right now, we have twenty-eight favorable, I mean, that's the, the specific yes. Uh, on top of that, out of forty-two, um, only three of those, uh, have not responded, and one of those has been a no, and so we could have up to the, you know, two classes full also. It is not strictly only for, uh, Birdwell. If there are other students that are showing high proficiency in English and Spanish, they would have to come and take a proficiency test with us, and we would review their STAR scores, and they could enter in also at that sixth grade year, which would allow other students, uh, to, to join the pathway.
So a Spanish, a, a student from a Spanish-speaking home in sixth grade who has been in TISD, maybe they've gone through our bilingual program, exited out, they're now in general ed, they could come to Birdwell, be part of the dual language if their Spanish was sufficient?
Yes, sir. And their English would also be, so generally, the, what's practiced in other programs is about eighty-five percent proficiency in both languages, and it would either be demonstrated on the language test, the language proficiency test, or on STAR.
Okay. Well, thank you so mu- oh, did, did any?
No, I just, my.
Okay.
Yes, well, thank you so much for.
Okay.
Presentation.
Thank you.
I, I have one question, the pre-K will, will no longer be on Birdwell's campus, is that correct?
So we have a head start, we, right now, we currently have two head starts, those will remain, and those students are welcome, and several do apply and go into our dual language program, and that will remain in this, without coming here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to future business, looks like March fifth, we have a board workshop, and the twenty-third, we have a regular meeting.
There's nine days stuck in between both of those that our district will be closed. It's called spring break, and sometimes we don't tell the board how appreciative we are as educators that you allow us to have nine straight days off, and we do the best we can to not schedule any weddings the week before spring break or other things, maybe the week after spring break, and try to get that double whammy there, because we've got to teach kids. But our teachers deserve it because, um, uh, February through the end of school, they get this one little break in there, you get a little bit in Easter weekend, but, uh, very appreciative our staff is that y'all allow us to have this time off. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I'll, uh, take a motion for adjournment then.
Motion to adjourn.
No second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.